Andy, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, we have two special presentations this evening, and we will start with Arts and Humanities Month. So David, if you'll meet me right there. Okay, we have a proclamation for you. I'm not gonna bite you very hard. Well, the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas October is National Arts and Humanities Month, a coast-to-coast collective recognition of the importance of culture in America; and where it was launched by Americans for the Arts in 1993 as a month-long celebration with goals of focusing on equitable access to the arts, encouraging participation in the arts, showing support for the arts, and raising public awareness of the role arts and humanities play in our community and our lives; and whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American and play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country; and whereas locally the Dublin Arts Council encourages our community, cultivates creativity, and fosters lifelong learning through the arts; and whereas Dublin Arts Council is committed to programs and events that highlight the best in aesthetic experiences with a strong emphasis on education and social awareness; and whereas the coronavirus had a devastating impact on America's arts sector, yet the arts helped collectively lead us through the darkest times of the pandemic, lifting our spirits and unifying our communities. Now therefore, I, Chris Amrose-Grooms, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby declare the month of October 2021 as National Arts and Humanities Month, in the City of Dublin, and encourage citizens to come together in celebration of the power of the arts and make a difference and change our lives for the better. Signed this 11th day of October. So we'd like to present this proclamation to you, and thank you for the work that the Arts Council does on behalf of our community. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, thank you. I appreciate all your support, Council especially. We couldn't do what we do without you. So thanks again, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, and our second special presentation this evening is for our own Scott Dring. So welcome Scott in the Dublin hospitality industry update.
Good evening, staff. On behalf of the Visit Dublin, Ohio Board, just want to thank you, City Council and city staff, for all the support you've given. COVID-19 has been has given just a huge impact, unfortunately, to all the hospitality industry. But without your financial support, which has really geared and helped our sales and marketing efforts, it's really been a lifeline, I think, for all the hospitality, retail restaurants. So thank you for that. Secondly, just want to acknowledge that we are working through some DNI efforts, along with the city, with Kirby and Homer, and we'll continue to keep art, make sure our efforts are aligned. So with that, just want to say thank you, and I'll hand it over to Scott Dring, our CEO and President. Thank you.
That was our board president, David Lee, if you guys did not know. So.
Always good to see the good doctor.
Doctor Lee, that's right. Great to see all of you, and congrats on the new digs here. It's pretty cool. So it's great to be here. I want to give you kind of a quick update on the lay of the land where we currently stand. This is the latest numbers we have from January through the month of August, and these are Dublin hotel occupancy rates. You can kind of see we're at 50% year-to-date through the month of August, up about 6% where we were last year, and you can see we're still, what, 23 percentage points of where we were in 2019. I know, Mayor, you and Matt talked last time about rates. Absolutely, average daily rates have begun to climb, especially in a lot of the high-desirable destinations. Maybe you tried to get some beach destinations or out west, you probably paid a lot for it. And I think that's what we've seen. We luckily did see an uptick, about $12 or so. That's the average rate that a Dublin visitor is paying at a hotel room through the month of August. Bed tax revenue, again, we're, it is what it is, right? I mean, we were up $300,000 versus 2020, but down about $1 million where we were in 2019. So we have a ways to go. And I think if we're projecting, and we spoke with all the hotels last month, we're projecting a 5% to 7% increase over in 2022 over 2021, which sounds great, but it's still about 33% down compared to 2019. So a bit of a climb to get back there. We don't anticipate getting back to 19 numbers until 2024. And I think the biggest reason for that is business travel. Obviously, that has been hit hard. And I think our market, I think, thanks to all of your efforts over the last year, supporting all those youth tournaments and all those bed tax grants, we're a diverse market for the most part. And I think we have leisure, we have group tour, we have youth sports, and if we didn't have those, we'd be in much worse shape. And give you an example here, these are some of the cities that are really reliant on business travel. And you can kind of see the huge loss they've seen, $59 billion. New York City in particular has seen huge losses over the last two years since the pandemic hit. And I think one thing that we've done, I think we kind of anticipated when this first started, that business travel would be the last to come, to resurrect out of this mess. So we really put all our eggs in our basket where we really thought we could have the greatest influence, and that's leisure travel, group travel, and athletic, youth athletic sports. And I think one of the ways we did that was through our regional campaign. And this is something we've done for the last six years. Again, six years ago, we only marketed historically in-state. And thanks to all your support, we were able to expand that marketing beyond our borders to our key feeder markets, what we call in Pittsburgh, Detroit, Indy, Lexington, Charleston, Huntington. And we've seen great results over the past years, great awareness. The campaign traditionally runs from April through July. I'm not going to dive into the weeds to talk about creative tonight. We'll do that another time. But the overall, the goal of the campaign is to really attract leisure visitors and raise awareness of the City of Dublin. And it's only the only citywide campaign that we're aware of that promotes Dublin outside the state of Ohio on a consistent annual basis. So it's not only a destination message, a tourist message, we're raising awareness of the city in Dublin. So who knows, someone that looking for a place to work or live, that could also lend some support as well. I want to dive into specifics of this year's campaign and results of it. Again, this campaign was through April through July. Bed tax revenue during that period increased 179%, 49 million media impressions, which is way over our goal. The cool thing about this campaign, too, is we can really track specifically where people are accessing our information from. So, for example, I'll have Missy on our staff say, okay, something's going on in Pittsburgh. I just had 300 requests for visitor guides. We'll say, well, we just ran, had a media buy Saturday and Sunday in Pittsburgh. So we can have that ROI and that quick return to see if our efforts are working or if they're not working. Now, if we were in Pittsburgh and we weren't getting anything, we'd probably pull that effort and try something else. And you can kind of see the impressions. Overall, restaurants had a great summer, and hotel occupancy increased 29 percentage points. So if you remember, year-to-date, this year we're only at 6 percentage points. During this campaign, April through July, we're up 29 percentage points. So any increase we saw this year was during the months of April through July. Now, obviously, we're not taking credit for all this. There was high demand out there for people to travel, but it was a competitive marketplace out there, too. Every city in the country, we're vying for visitors, and I think we did a great job attracting as many as we could. We're trying to get out of this as best we can, and I just wanted to kind of highlight real quickly a couple of things we're doing to kind of emerge from this. We talked about the regional and statewide campaigns. One of the biggest needs that our hospitality industry needs is workers. You've heard all this before. We actually went a little outside of what we typically do and created a Work in Dublin campaign to try to get hospitality workers for all our hotels, restaurants, retail. We partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and others to try to raise that message and try to help them as best we could. We talked about athletic events. The archery championship was again here in August. We were able to secure that for next year as well. Bus tours have been a surprise. I think we all thought, excuse me, bus tours would be the last to come, with everyone being crammed on a bus, but surprisingly not. I mean, it's, I think the mature market is vaccinated, and they want to get out and travel. And we've had buses, 30 or 40 buses in the last, since April, from New Hampshire, Illinois, all of New York, New Jersey. And, you know, those folks are about 50 people per bus, so they're coming in here and spending a lot of money, staying in our hotels and restaurants as well. The Columbus Food Adventures is something you may have heard. We secured that and have a Dublin Food Adventures now that is doing very well. We're going to trade shows ourself. They are happening across the country, and these trade shows are generating leads force. Nothing this year, mainly toward the end of '22 and '23 is what we're seeing. The cocktail trails continue to do well, picnic packs. And finally, the Only in Dublin series we're excited about, we've had a lot of buzz about, is something we're creating on a monthly basis that highlights the unique things and product that we have here in the City of Dublin. And we've created, it's a three-minute video that we launch per month. I just have a 45 seconds kind of encapsule of what the videos look like, and I think we're going to show it for you right now, real quick.
Welcome to Dublin. I'm your host, Khadija Ammarie, and I'm exploring all the hidden gems of this popular central Ohio city, from food to entertainment and everything in between. So come with me, and let's explore all the things that Only Dublin has to offer. I'm here with Louis Fonfons, owner of Vincenzo. So tell us a little bit about the history of Vincenzo's.
Yeah, I'd love to. We incorporated in 1986. We opened in 1987. We've been here for about 35 years, working hard, making fresh pasta, fresh bread. We've been successful for those years. Lots of hard work, great service, great food. That's our story.
Looking to add a little cultural flair to your outdoor adventures? Well, look no further than your local Dublin parks. Home to some amazing art and sculptures, Dari Field Park is sure to satisfy. Going, Going Gone was cleverly crafted, so it's not only visually stunning, but it brings you into the art, literally. So what's your favorite part about this piece?
Well, I think it's going into the woods. You know, there's a door that enters the woods, and you go through and see what the artist has left behind, just from the front of the, from the front of the piece to the back.
Cool. Sounds exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting.
Okay, let's go check it out. The variety and experiences that Dublin has to offer is truly amazing. There is so much to see and do here, and we're just getting started. Be sure to tune in next month to see more of what you can find Only in Dublin. I'm your host, Khadija Ammarie. See you soon. Welcome to Dublin.
Scott, I got a question. I know the staff, the city staff was talking. It's good to see the River Box thing incorporated, because I think that's a real draw for people to come down here. We were talking about the bicycle trips, fishing, historic, and I don't know how far that got or where that all, you know, is that we had like a half a dozen exciting trips you could take through Dublin on your bicycle and see, you know, a genre of a specific sort. So where are we with that? And is that a coming thing, or?
Well, thanks, Scott. We sure do appreciate you and all that you do to promote our city. And always good to have you, Dr. Lee. Nice to see you as well. So thanks for the hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call a bit of an audible here, because we have some things that kind of fit into special presentations relative to awards that our staff has received. And I know we have some special staff here this evening, and we'd just like to honor them before they have to sit here for two and a half hours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of council. Just want to take this opportunity to congratulate not just the Department of Parks and Recreation, but the city as a whole. We originally received our first accreditation nationally back in 2010 through the Commission for Parks and Recreation and so, Agencies. This is through the National Recreation and Parks Association. We have since gone through two additional reaccreditations. We just recently got approved again for reaccreditation for 2021. We would have had this in 2020 had we not been in a pandemic, but we had to push it off a year, the commission and the site visits and things, a lot of logistical issues with that. But I want to congratulate our staff and many of departments that have been involved with the process to get us through our accreditation. It takes weeks and months and years to actually gather and write the best standard practices that we serve the public with. So we're very proud of that. And yes, we do have a few staff members here. We've got a group of our administrators in the back here who have spent many, many hours putting together all the documentations and their writings for this. I'm going to call them out. Kelly Rigano, Abby Brooks, Molly Steiner, and I'm going to give a special shout out to Kim Wigram. She was our ringleader, our team leader. She was the one that kept pushing us and making sure that we were on time and working with the site visitors and so forth. So I want to congratulate them on leading us through that process as well. Thank you.
Well, it always takes a good ringleader to get something done. So thank you for that, and thank you all so much for representing us with excellence. And we do have a bit of a rock star with us this evening. I'd like to invite our own Colleen Gilger forward. Our economic development team has some special recognition for the International Economic Development Organization of the Year. So if you would come forward and tell us a little bit about the great things you and your team have been up to, we'd really like to honor all of that here this evening.
Well, thank you. It's for population 25,000 to 200,000. No, take that back, 500,000. So we were honored with the City of Phoenix as the two EDOs of the year this week, this past week in Nashville. So a very, very big award. What was really nice is that Kenny McDonald with One Columbus is also on the board of the International Economic Development Council. So he was the one that was able to get up on the stage and present us with our award in front of about 1,000 other communities.
Well, that's fantastic, and we sure do appreciate all that you do. And Phoenix has got nothing on Dublin, so.
That's right.
Well, except maybe sunshine in February.
That's it.
But aside from that, absolutely nothing. So, well, thanks for the hard work. I know that that recognition is a much coveted one, and we certainly appreciate the work that you all do to bring that award home.
Thank you, and we appreciate all of your support. And I would like to thank my previous team and my current team, because it was, it was a whole group effort. So I appreciate you guys supporting our team over the years and our strategy, and we always feel like we have, we have seven people behind us.
Well, thank you. You do. Know that you do.
Thanks.
Okay, we will get back on pace with this evening's agenda. I want to take a moment for citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone present, either in person or virtually, that wishes to make a comment this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
This brings us to second reading, public hearing ordinances. I'd like to make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 61-21 through 63-21 together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Andy. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Ordinance 61-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an easement with property owners Mary Blum and Stephen Blum along the Indian Run Meadows planned use development corridor for landscape maintenance. 6221 is regarding the property owned by Chad Brennan and Lori Brennan, and 6321 is regarding the property owned by Stephen Parrish.
Thank you. And Matt Ehrman will have our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no new information to bring forward to you this evening. Staff is recommending approval.
Great, thank you. I'm going to take a moment for a public comment, if anyone would like to speak publicly relative to this legislation. Hearing none, council questions, discussion? I would just like to thank these residents for their willingness to partner with us and to make this greenway, kind of restore it to where it once was, and hopefully add the beauty to their backyard and their sense of privacy and noise and light calming and all of those things, and enhance the experience for everyone that travels through that area. With that, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Okay, introduction, first reading, public hearing ordinances. I'd like to make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 64-21 through 67-21 together. Is there a second? Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 64-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an easement with property owners Keith and Catherine Gaspere along the Indian Run Meadows planned use development corridor for landscape maintenance. Ordinance 6521 regarding the property owned by Carol Rosten. Ordinance 6621 regarding the property owned by Mary Antesta, and ordinance 6721 regarding the property owned by Holly and Jared Williams.
Thank you, and we will go back to Mr. Ehrman, first staff report.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is yet a continuation of these easements for the screening along Avery Muirfield for the Indian Run Meadows subdivision. These additional four highlighted in blue on the map there will conclude up to 19 of these 28 easements that we are hopeful to achieve by the end of the year. So with that, we will bring this forward on the October 25 meeting for any questions or any, or approval for these ordinances.
Great, thank you. Want to take a moment for public comment, if there is anyone present this evening in person or virtually that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? Great, well, we will look forward to hearing, hearing this again on October the 25th. Thank you. Ordinance 68-21.
Adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022.
Thank you. Our staff report will be by Matt Stifler. Welcome.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you. Ordinance 68-21 is the 2022 proposed operating budget. By way of schedule, the September 27 meeting regarding, contained a presentation of revenue estimates. The October 11 meeting earlier today at 5 o'clock contained an overview of the expenditures. So if the public is interested in either of those items in more detail, they could review those to dates. In total, at the September 27 meeting, we discussed revenues totaling $93.3 million, an increase of 7.8% as compared to the 2021 operating budget. Income taxes remain the largest share of these revenues, followed closely by, or followed by charges for services revenues. Intergovernmental revenue is up this year, mainly due to the $2.5 million in American Rescue Plan funding that is part of this budget. Regarding expenditures, we have expenditures proposed of $101.8 million. This is a 7.5% or, a 7.5 million or 7.9% increase from the previous operating budget. The largest category of increases is operating expenditures, which are increasing 12.9%. All told, this budget is in compliance with our general fund policy and will leave us with a general fund balance of 57.3%. Again, this is a conservative estimate based on expending all of the available budgeted expenditures. This will not likely be the case, that we would expect that number to be higher, but on a budgetary perspective, we are in compliance with the general fund, fund balance policy. From a variance perspective, this budget is in line with the budget passed last year, which was also dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic, and in line with our previous history of budgeting expenditures greater than revenues. This year, year-to-date revenues have exceeded expenditures by just under $4 million, as seen in the year-to-date column here. We expect that to continue this year and to be the case next year, barring any unforeseen circumstances regarding revenues or expenditures. All told, this budget continues to provide the city's high level of services and continues to advance council's goals, particularly those related to mobility, and continuing to maintain the city's assets. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Want to take a moment for public comment, if there's anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? Well, we look forward to our next workshop. I know we have a lot of robust conversations yet to be had. So appreciate the overview and the introduction. We will have second reading, public hearing, perhaps on October the 25th. That is our target goal. That could fluctuate depending on how our conversations go. Okay, introduction, public hearing resolutions. Resolution 57-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with AARP Ohio and to accept $20,000 in grant funding from the 2021 AARP Community Challenge Grant Program.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Thank you. Resolution 5721 is before you this evening regarding accepting a $20,000 grant award for Dublin through the AARP Ohio Community Challenge Grant Program. Staff did submit an application to the program for $20,000 for a mobility hub at the rec center adjacent to the senior lounge. The project includes relocating existing bike racks and installing an ADA compliant curb ramp as shown on your screens. So the area in yellow is where the mobility hub will be located, and looking at the bike racks and installing a shelter here adjacent to the rec center, or the senior lounge at the rec center, to better serve our seniors and provide transit options, micro mobility options for our public. We will also look to include wayfinding information and a mobility kiosk, including those smart type of infrastructure elements that we have discussed previously. Dublin was awarded the actual amount that we did request. These grants typically range in value from $500 to $20,000. Given the type of infrastructure we were contemplating, we did ask for the maximum typical award, and we did receive that. So it's very exciting for Dublin. The terms of the grant include that this project be complete by July 30 of 2022, so it's a very quick turnaround. So good for us as well. Mobility hubs have been discussed at the Public Services Committee and with council during the CIP process, as you might recall. And the project is consistent with those discussions, as the rec center was one of the Phase 1 locations identified and discussed. Leveraging this grant does require some minor adjustments to the work plan as defined in the 2022 CIP, and is covered in the staff memo for your reference. And staff does recommend that the city council adopt Resolution 5721 to accept the grant and authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with AARP Ohio. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Great, thank you. I'll take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none?
Just a quick question about the reserved senior parking. So when I was looking at this, I wonder if maybe some of the spots could be moved over sort of closer to where this area would be, right? Because they're all along the front there, which.
They're right by the door.
Right, which is great for those spots, but that kind of makes those spots far away from where this is going to be. So maybe some of those spots sort of at the end of that last sort of embankment of parking.
Yeah.
Could be.
Little pod.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could definitely look into that. We had not contemplated that at this point, but we can certainly work with Tracy and see if there's something that's appropriate for that.
For sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to say, you know, how proud I am that you guys ran down this sort of rather unusual funding mechanism, AARP. Who was behind that?
My good friend J.M. Rayburn found the grant, and I'd like to recognize J.M. because he did put the grant application together, did a great job, obviously. Yep.
Way to go, Jay. Thank you.
Thank you. This is great. Thank you for the work on this. I just had a sort of a question and a comment. I know just from my own bike riding through here and movement through here that that curve where you come around into right where the shaded area begins, I don't want to call that a blind curve, but it's pretty kind of hard to see if you're coming through there either on the path or whatever. I don't know as part of this if there's a way to, since this is going to be such a traffic central place, if there's some ways, that's just a question, maybe look at that visibility as you're coming into the rec center because it really is a, you really can't see.
Okay.
On by car, no problem, but by jogging or by bike.
By biking. We can certainly take a look into it. Thank you.
That's difficult to do. And then although this is certainly a grant from AARP, this is going to be, I assume, very much used by everybody in the community.
Absolutely. It is intended for everyone. We obviously sold it to AARP as being adjacent to the senior lounge.
Yeah, but I think it's going to be an interesting, so you mentioned different types of mobility.
Correct.
Bike share will be here.
So docked bike share, yes. Bike racks will be here and other forms of micro mobility in future phases, for sure, are contemplated.
And it will be lightlit?
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you. This is great. Thank you.
Now, I just wanted to congratulate staff about all the work and especially J.M. about moving forward on this bike and the bike share and the mobility hubs because I think we're really going to make an impression when they start to show up in places, and I think people are going to start really thinking about an alternative mode of transportation through the city of Dublin, where it's always been so auto-oriented and we're pushing pedestrians, but with true mobility hubs scattered around and the way I think they'll be designed, because we talked about that, I know. You've got your ears open there, but I think it's really going to make a big impact, and I think people, this awareness is really going to start to cascade into something really fun to watch. So thank everyone of you for all the work you've done. It's been an amazing process to watch this past year or so.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Well, it's certainly nice to see how much pride you all take in pursuing these grants and pursuing this work for some of our citizens that have difficulty in moving around. So I know J.M. is busting at the seams in excitement of seeing this work come to fruition, and I'm just thankful that we have a number of employees in the city that are so passionate about what they do, that they go to bed at night thinking about what kind of grants they can pursue to make our city a better place. So we certainly do appreciate that. And with that, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler? Mr. Reiner? Ms. Aludo? Mr. Peterson? Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes. Brings us to Resolution 58-21.
Waiving competitive bidding and declaring sole source and authorizing the city manager to accept Columbus FiberNet's proposal for the purpose of fiber installation.
Thank you. I will introduce it in our staff report, I think, is, are you going to do that, Dana?
Good evening, members of council. In response or in regards to this resolution, provided a staff report, giving you some background on it, and I'll just hit some highlights of that. And Kirby is bringing up a couple maps for you to look at while I speak to this. But as part of the construction of roadways and utilities associated with the reconstruction of Riverside Drive and the development of Riverside Crossing Park and Bridge Park, the city constructed its own multi-conduit bank system designed to accommodate and carry fiber optics. As you all are aware, the city owns and operates a pretty robust fiber optic system called Dublink. Those fiber optics have not been deployed in this particular pipe yet or the conduit. What we're proposing to do is to go ahead and make those deployments. There's some fiber optic in the immediate areas you can see in the maps, but this will finalize the connection of those to the greater loops that have been constructed around this area. We have received a quote from the official company, Columbus FiberNet Dublink LLC, for the deployment and splicing of fiber optics in the amount of $189,345. We have vetted this. We feel that this is in keeping with current costs in the marketplace and consistent with the work that this company has done before for us. The cost of this project, we've covered as provided in the current capital budget, or we may also use the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA dollars to fund this as well. Our recommendation is not only to approve this resolution relative to allowing us to enter into contract with them, but also to declare Columbus FiberNet Official Company and Dublink LLC as a sole source and waiving competitive bidding. It's not something we do very often. We do this pretty rarely, although it has been consistent that relative to doubling fiber optic system, we typically have done this, and the reason is it's a fiber optic bundle. You've all seen fiber optics. You know what that's like to operate. It's very delicate. We have active companies in that fiber optics who rely on those, including our own operations. The official company, Columbus FiberNet Dublink LLC, has managed, built, operated, spliced this system since its inception. So they have managed all the outside fiber around it that this will be splicing too, so it's very important that they do that. They will maintain this system after the fact, once it's in place, so it's important that they know how it's laid out and that where it connects to the various, not only connecting to the existing fiber ring, but where there may be laterals that it will connect to, very important that they lay that out, so we don't get any finger pointing after the fact that somebody didn't do it right, and this company has to be the one to make all the connections. And then certainly, again, I will just repeat the sensitivity of that, but I've laid out four reasons as to why we think that it's important to go ahead and declare this sole source. So with that, staff recommends council pass this resolution. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
I have a question, and obviously it's something that we absolutely need, but I'm looking at all the lines and through all through Bridge Park, and I'm wondering what what construction is going to look like when this happens. So how bad is it and when will it happen? Or will it all just be tunneled?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. Thanks for bringing that up. And in fact, I really want to credit the staff for thinking forward when this infrastructure was built, because in that very urban-type environment, we didn't want to go back and tear this up. And that's a lot of the reason we do Dublink anyway. We kind of refer to Dublink as two things. Once, it's a multi-conduit bank system, and the other, it's a fiber optic system. And we have franchised with the official company many years ago to put in this multi-conduit system for the purpose of not going back and continuously digging up the right-of-way and disrupting infrastructure. So that is the case here. Went ahead and deployed those conduits throughout the system, so they're already there. This is primarily just pulling fiber optic into the system. It's not to say they won't have to, you know, dig something up, but you're not going to see the disruptions if they were laying a pipe or what they call boring pipes through there. It's already there, so it's just pulling the fiber optic into the existing pipe.
I'm sure the businesses will be thrilled to hear that.
Dana, they were our original partners in our original fiber optic venture, weren't they?
They were. In fact, they hold the franchise that actually when we extend new roads and right-of-way, it's their responsibility to extend it. In this case, we did it on our own because we wanted to retain the control of all the conduits in this system. I also mentioned that you all passed legislation earlier this year that restructured the phase pricing for Dublink and also made certain arrangements for this particular area. Since we own the conduit, we can offer some of that empty conduit to other competitive service providers at a very low cost and no cost, so that we can get competition in for this particular area and to incent them into the pipe, so that we're not doing all that disruptive work if others want to deploy.
You know, in all these years, I can't think of any conflicts we really had with them. They've been a really good partner.
I'm sorry?
I said, "In all these years, I can't think of any conflicts we've had with them." They've been a very good partner.
Yeah, they've done a great job for us in maintaining, and they manage not only the 25 to 30-mile system within Dublin, but don't forget, the city owns 100 miles of fiber optics outside of Dublin, so they manage that on a day-to-day basis for us as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Great. Up next, we have Adora's presentation, and Allison Leroy will present the staff report.
I learned last time I have to put this down because I couldn't see Jane or Andy the whole time, and I kept standing on my toes. Good evening, members of council. Coming back with you all, with Adora, we were here in, was it two months now ago? Can't believe we're in October. So I just have a couple of things just to bring up, and then I know there was some idea that we wanted to have some discussion on both the hours and the cost of those cups. So one of the things that we did at the last meeting, we did, council did vote to extend it year-round, so that is not something we need to take care of tonight. We have ordered the composting bins. We are still waiting on cup availability. It has not opened up. I think I mentioned last time I've had that order in since May. I still do not have that order or any update on when that order might show up. So we are still having a lot of supply issues in that area. We did create a trash collection map. Actually, if you follow the link and it was in your packet, we work with our GIS team, so now we have all of our regular trash recycling and where the composting bins are going to be once they get in there, so it's helpful for us to almost even see how that works out. And I think it's something that, we did it specifically for this project, but I think it's going to be something that sort of helps us going forward when we look at some of the sustainability efforts in downtown Dublin. So talking about next steps, we mentioned it last time, but I wanted to bring up again, we are not recommending at this point doing an extension of the area. We feel like this is something we want to probably revisit it in the first quarter of next year when we really see what's happening with the park usage, those kind of things, since we know that specifically that East Plaza will be open for a couple of months, hopefully by then, and we'll see how that usage is. So the things that we wanted to speak about specifically tonight, the first is the times here. I went back and listened again to our last council meeting where we discussed, and I think this is what I was hearing from the members of council. So I put this in for a discussion point. We obviously can change whatever we want. I think one of the feedback points we heard was keeping some consistency for days, because I think there is some confusion. A lot of our other communities are every day of the week. Most of them have moved to that, and I think a lot of that is that confusion issue. So we thought the easiest way to actually show this is the opening times and then the closing times, but we wanted to give you the kind of the graph to show you what we were and then also what we would be. So you can see the changes. Obviously, we talked about adding Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday and Sunday. None of those had hours before. And Thursday and Friday, the big change is just opening an hour earlier, and then Saturday is actually opening at 1:00. I think last time we came to you with 9:00 a.m., and we moved that back based on what we heard to 1:00 p.m., both on Saturday and Sunday. So I'm here for any questions or comments about what we want to go with this one.
Thoughts?
Relative to the hours, I think that's spot on with what we, I think collectively, were thinking.
Okay, so appreciate that.
I just want to make a comment. As I looked at the survey, there were only 21 respondents, and I didn't see that, I think that the door has been successful. I don't think there's been any really big complaints, but in extending it to every day of the week, I think I'd have a better comfort level if I knew that we had more input from the neighborhood. There were only six respondents, I think, from the west side, and let me see.
There are only six? I'll have to look that up.
And 14 from the east side of the river, and if you look at the survey, not that many of them said that there were too few days. So I'm still on the fence about whether or not to extend it Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
And just to confirm, those were the only ones that responded with their location. I think in the original survey with the ones we gave you last time, I think it was close to half or more that didn't tell us where they lived, so we don't really know that answer. And when we looked at those numbers, that's when they were asking for the extended days.
How many survey respondents did you have in total?
I'm going to have to go back to that last memo. I think it was around 150.
Did you have that many?
Yeah.
Because I didn't see them there. I kind of looked.
Yeah, the one that was in this memo was just the breakdown of those that we could specifically identify that were in the surrounding area. Mainly, you know, just some of that was a bit of a guess.
I would think 150 was a minimum. I think there was five pages of it in our-
Okay, I thought there were more, and then I saw this, and I'm going, that doesn't-
Yeah, that was just because I think council asked last time just to see the ones that were specifically the neighbors or that were specifically in the Adora area.
Right. And as for the cost, I was a little confused. Maybe you could just give us a moment to talk about what the cost of the program is.
Yeah, and I can go to that slide, and, oh, there. And Matt Stifler did do the breakdown on that, so if there's any specific questions, I may pull him to answer any specifics on that. But if you'll see, there was a significant cost in getting the program up and going. Obviously, that was a lot of staff time just kind of researching, you know, what Adora is, putting the application together, getting the publicity out, those kind of things. So those are the one-time costs that we won't see again. And then we had a little extra during this first pilot. A lot of that was staffing for like police and others just to see how it was going to go. But then we also were able to kind of project out of the pilot now what things are we going to be doing and how much staff time it's going to take. So you can see during the pilot, we estimated that it was 51 cents per cup just to run it those first three months, and now we're saying going on forward, we're estimating it's about 25 cents a cup. And again, some of this, we will have better costs next quarter because we can already see the amount of cups that we are selling to those retailers has dropped dramatically even since the last time I was here. I think, you know, we saw a lot of cup purchases, and now they're trying to figure out what they're doing. Obviously, as we go further into the winter, we're going to have less people out on a Friday and Saturday night walking around. So I think that's the other reason we said we are still suggesting the 25 cents, but we really want to come back in first quarter to really see if that is the cost, because we know there's going to be a lot of changes when we have nine months of data versus three months of data.
Well, you know, in total cost, it's 25 cents a cup, but do you know how many cups, like how much was used? I have no idea how successful the door is right now.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we don't know how many cups we're going through in a month necessarily, because we know how many we've sold. We sold 75,000 in the pilot, and from that, we just, we kind of guessed of what we would be selling going forward. And so we don't know exactly. That's one of the reasons we've kind of extrapolated what we thought based on what we were doing per month. Again, I don't know that somebody's not sitting on 2,000 cups in their back storeroom or they're ordering them the second they're using them. You know, with that three-month period, it was really hard for us to-
Do you have any feedback from any of the restaurants as to how, not a number necessarily, but are there a lot of people coming in and asking for the Adora cups?
Yeah, and actually, in the last memo, we had really super positive comments from our businesses that were the sellers. I mean, all of them reported increased sales. Nobody ever said there's an exact number that this many, 5% of the people that walk in get a Adora cup. You know, nobody had those kind of numbers, but I know there are some of the retailers who have set up bars specifically just, or a section of their bar just to serve the Adora patrons, and that's really worked out. I know North High was doing that from day one because they had some experience in some of their other locations. So they knew they needed that place for that person who just wanted to come in and buy a drink and go back out.
And the only reason I ask that is because during the summer, we've got a bump up in general just because everybody's out and about. And how much of that was Adora-related and how much was just, you know, it's summer and people are trying to get out. So, you know, I'm not opposed to having it every day. know, I'm not opposed to having it every day. I still think this is, to me, a pilot to see how it goes. I don't, I don't believe we've had any real complaints from neighbors or, you know, or from people. But I just think, you know, it's one of these things, I feel like we have to step in gently. I do. Because it's, because we're around schools, libraries, and, you know, that sort of thing. So, it's a little bit different to me. But I'm willing to give it an opportunity to see how it works.
Kathy? So, Allison, you mentioned you have an order of the compostable cups in?
Since May.
What was the price per cup on those?
Those were going to be, at that point, they were 15 cents. We had gotten a discount. I don't know what they're going to be if we're ever going to, I think part of the reason might be because I was only paying 15 cents. Somebody else might be swooping in and paying quite a bit more. So, we're still out there doing a bit of research to see. I think that the, I wish I knew the answer to what they're going to be going forward, but it's a complete, it'd be a guess.
But it's going to be more than the eight or 10 cents we paid for the current cups? That we can, we can feel confident?
Yeah, once we know that they're, what they're going to be, where they're going to land. Again, that's why we didn't want to, Matt and I discussed this, we didn't want to make a projection based on what we don't know. And that's why we suggest coming back early next year when we hopefully have a consistent supply. I don't know how long this is going to last. Hopefully, it's just another month or two and then we'll know what we're doing.
Yeah, if you knew that, right? Yeah. Given that, I think it is the strong desire of the council that we use these compostable cups as soon as that we get them. I think the cost per cup has got to be at the 50 cent level or higher because we're going to end up paying for that. And if we're sitting on an inventory of, you know, 250,000, what we don't want to encourage is using up all of that inventory because we really want to do the, you know, we want composted, not thrown in the trash. So, I think we have to assume that. And if you add, you know, additional, you know, 10 or 15 cents a cup and then it looks like we haven't got our composting cost in here, it seems to me we're hugging closer to 50 cents than 25 cents if that's what we want to do. And it seems to me that would be logical. Otherwise, we'll continue to fund this. We funded it for, what, $120,000 during the pilot. I think from now on, we should aim towards the cost recovery mode in a compostable world. So, that would be my recommendation there, just given. And we won't recover that initial cost at that bat, but I think the requirement that we move to that as soon as we can and that we assume that. As far as the hours, to me, I don't think Monday through Wednesday, I mean, when I read the concerns, they were noise, trash, and violation of the Dora zones. And those weren't really related to, you know, sort of the day of the week or, I think, Monday to Wednesday. So, that doesn't, that doesn't bother me. I do appreciate the changing of the times on the Sunday and related to that. And I very much appreciate your working with Crawford-Hoyne and thank you to them to put the, both the recycle and the compostable in there. So, all those things are positives. But I really think we should, we should price it so at least it covers our costs, which it won't at 25 cents. So, that's my thoughts on that. Thank you.
I'll just echo Kathy's comments. It seemed to me, we don't really know supply and cost of the compostable cups, but we know it's going to be more expensive. So, I would be inclined to increase the cost kind of going in. And as far as the hours go, I'm comfortable with what you proposed.
Okay, well, I would, I would agree with Kathy and Andy. I think if we would lower the price of cups, it's easier than raising it because they'll print up all of their drink costs and so on and so forth. And then if we raise it, you know, 25 cents or whatever, then, you know, they might have to redo all of that. So, I would prefer to start with the 50 cent number. And then if that, we deem that to be excessive, then we could always backpedal off of that and nobody would win except for the restaurateurs. So, I can't imagine we would have much conflict with that. And I also appreciate the adjustment of the hours. I think those are very appropriate given the comments we received. And thank you for, I know I was pushing hard for the comments to be broken down about, by where they live. And your summary is supportive of what I had anticipated, that the people that live near the Dora district are kind of, you know, a bit skeptical of what that's going to mean to them. So, I would agree with Jane that this is, you know, it's still going to be a pilot for us. And hopefully, those numbers will come more in line with the balance of the community once it's executed and hopefully well and everyone feels safe and all of those things in that district. So, I appreciate that. So, with that, if there are no further comments, I will make a motion to approve the staff recommendation regarding the changes of days and hours for the Dora as discussed and the cost increased to 50 cents per cup. And with that, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Christina.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes. And I know there was some discussion relative to the sandwich boards and coming up with something that was a bit more aesthetic. So, will, do you have any idea on the timing of those? Will they be by the time the new park opens?
I'll work with Lindsay's team. I know that they did the original signs. So, we will look at those. I think at the point, we originally did them, it was get them up so we could get them going. But we will work together to have something that's a more permanent signage down that, in that area.
Yeah, and maybe even it's something we could have fixed to something that's permanent there. And our sign shop could make something that is a bit more attractive and not be kind of in the flow of traffic of the, of the bridge and maybe get it out of the way, but still meet all the criteria for notifying residents.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the proposed city entryway updates. And Robert Rank is going to give us our staff report.
Jenny, the members of council? I'd like to, like you said, discuss city entryways this evening. We spent the last few months going over city entryway signs and taking a look at what we can do to enhance and improve our current entryway signs. So, our current entryway signs are dated, not standard, and they don't conform to current city branding. Generally, the landscaping around them is done well, but it does vary from location to location. We have 31 city entryway signs. And if you go to the link that's in your council memo, you can see a picture of the existing condition of each entryway sign as of about three weeks ago when the pictures were taken. So, it can give you a sense of what we're dealing with. But this slide gives a bit of a flavor of our entryway signs. So, you can see at various locations, they look different. Some obviously include designations for Tree City USA for different high school state championships. They're a bit dated. And then some, particularly those that are in the more rural areas, are kind of your general green entryway signs. So, staff sees an opportunity to provide some standardization and then also an opportunity to enhance some areas as well. So, we worked with transportation, mobility, and communications and public information to update the signs in a way that is consistent with our current branding. So, the updated signs provide standardized locations for the city recognitions. So, you can see the top of the sign is the current branding and is consistent with what you would see around the city on different branded items. And then beneath the sign, there's an area, rather than having it put in different areas around the sign, there's an area where we can put city recognitions in a way that's standard throughout the city. I would note that in the, in the staff memo, there's a comprehensive list of the recommendations for which different accolade signs will go in different areas of the city, as well as the designations, whether it be Purple Heart City, Tree City USA, bicycle-friendly community, sustainable 2050 community, or of course, our high school state championship signs. We do propose maintaining our high school state championship designations as is currently provided. We are proposing moving some of the locations. The current resolution is from 2006. And so, the resolution calls for locations that aren't necessarily in the same areas as the high school attendance just areas. And so, we do propose moving them to areas that are closer to the high schools, areas that people identify more with the high schools. We also want to reach out to the high schools. I know that Jerome High School recently updated their branding, and it's been some time since we spoke to Scioto or Kaufman High School. So, if council approves these signs as we're proposing, we do want to reach out to the high schools to make sure that the branding that we're including on our signs are consistent with the branding that they would like to see. These are the dimensions of the signs. You can see that they would be a bit bigger than the signs that are currently in place. However, if you look at the signs, particularly the signs that have designations like Tree City USA or like the high school designations, they're placed above the sign, below the sign. So, this really gives an example of the way it'll be consolidated and we think give a much cleaner and professional look for the city with the areas that we can have right beneath the sign for the designation. The other issue that we noted with our entryway signs is the landscaping around the signs. So, this is an example of kind of the time of year, you don't really see the flowers, but of what we think would be good landscaping. So, a mulch bed with flowering plants and tall decorative glasses, grass, not glasses, grass. We would like to do day lilies for consistency. However, different areas have different environmental issues. So, it would be a flower like that, but we want to standardize that. We don't think that this is going to be a significant cost. We can absorb this in our current budget. However, this would really, again, just provide that consistency that would more reflect the city standards. The, the other enhancement that staff would like to make is proposed monument signs at six different locations. So, working with the Division of Transportation and Mobility, we identified six locations that are heavily trafficked, key entrances to the city that we think that we can enhance with monument signs. So, we understand that the monument signs can be very subjective in terms of style and preference, but what staff is proposing are signs that we think are attractive and that can work in the various location. So, the monument signs would be approximately five feet wide to, and three to four feet tall. They would include a dry stacked stone facing similar to the walls in Veterans Park. The wall is being constructed along South High Street and other projects throughout the city with a limestone or precast concrete cap on each monument sign. The message portions of the monument signs, i.e. the welcome to Dublin, and also the Tree City and other designations are mounted to the monument sign with the ability to be removed and replaced with specific details being determined throughout the design process. We did not consider lighting in our estimated cost. However, if lighting for the evening is desired, that's something that we can certainly look at, whether we do it solar lighting or we pull off of a nearby street light or traffic signal. We would think that would be about $8,000 to $10,000, but that's very much going to vary depending on the location and how much work would have to be done to, to bring electricity to the sign. So, looking at the total estimated cost, you can see in your memo, per sign, it's about $20,000 to $25,000 for the monument sign itself. The landscaping estimate is about $5,000 to $10,000 per sign. The design cost in total, we estimate at about $4,000. So, the total estimate is approximately $174,000 to $234,000. We have discussed this project with the finance department. They've reviewed the proposal and determined that there'll be sufficient unencumbered funds in the 2021 CIP to cover the proposed costs. So, if this is something that we want to move on right now, that's something that we can cover within our existing CIP. Again, understanding that this can be very much a subjective item. If this is an issue that the council would like to talk about in terms of the aesthetic of the sign, the location of the monument signs, or just how they look, that's something we could certainly look at talking about in a committee if that is something that the council would prefer, rather than just committing to the proposed signs right now. There were a couple of site-specifics considerations that we wanted to discuss. So, specific to France Road, just west of France Road on US 33 SR 161, that's a heavily trafficked entryway. And one thing we noticed is that there's an informal turnaround created there. I'm sure that you've seen it as you enter the city. It's something that's been created over time by just traffic trying to turn around and take a U-turn. And also, our police officers have used it in the past to do traffic enforcement. We've worked with the police department. That's not something they feel that they need to keep. So, we'd like to work with ODOT to place guardrails to close off that area. We can then rehabilitate the area and not have to worry about people turning around there. And we think that'll be a significant improvement to a very important entryway. Another area, and this is not the greatest map, but we wanted to talk about, was the Sawmill Road I-270 interchange. So, currently, ODOT maintains the east side of the interchange and Columbus maintains the medians, including weeding and the expansion joints and maintenance like that between Billingsley and SR 161. So, what staff is proposing is working with ODOT and Columbus to take over this maintenance. We do this currently to a roundabout that is technically the city of Columbus's responsibility at Lakehurst Court and Emerald Parkway to ensure that we have a standard of service that's consistent with what is in line with Dublin's expectations. Bottom line, Columbus, obviously, is a huge city. ODOT has a lot of maintenance responsibility, and they're just not going to maintain this at the level that we would expect. And when people enter this interchange, we believe they're thinking Dublin. And most people don't think, well, gosh, that's ODOT and that's Columbus. So, of course, we get it. But we think that we can take this over. The estimated cost would be approximately $30,000. And that would add into a $100,000 contract that we're proposing as part of the fiscal year 2022 operating budget to move the I-270 corridor maintenance over to a contract as opposed to having staff do that maintenance. And so, that would be added on to that contract, which would be bid if it's approved in the upcoming operating budget. So, this is not a decision that needs to be made tonight. This is a decision that we can consider as part of the operating budget, but it is consistent with what we're talking about with the entryways. And so, I wanted to discuss that tonight because this is a problematic area that we recognize and that we wanted to discuss. So, those were the primary areas, standardizing the entryway signs, the non-monument entryway signs with the signs that we're proposing, putting the monument signs at those six locations. We are proposing that they look as we've, as we've shown, but again, we can certainly discuss that further. And then taking over the France Road 33, that's not taking over, but making sure we address that. And then also taking over the Sawmill Road I-270 interchange. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Great, thanks, Robert. Questions, thoughts?
I'm curious on the, on the I-270 interchange, Robert, what are you hoping that will happen with the, with the new maintenance? I'm looking, are you looking at both the east and west side of?
Yes, we want to do the east and west side together at the same standard of maintenance, rather than have the west side maintained by the city and the east side maintained by ODOT. And then if you look at the medians, there's typically weeds and all sorts of stuff that pop out in the expansion joints. It really is just a poor look. And so, we would take over spraying that, pulling that, and make sure that it looks attractive in that area where you're entering the city.
Do you anticipate any plantings or anything like that? Or is it just, do you anticipate any plantings or are you just looking at maintenance?
We're just looking at maintenance as it is right now.
Right, okay.
It would go a long way just to keep it consistently mowed and keep the debris picked up and.
It's really trash.
That's a gateway to our business corridor as well. And there's going to be some other expansion in the immediate area, so.
It's extremely bad.
You know, based on what you just said, you know, I've always wondered about, you know, maybe us upgrading the planting as you come, as you're growing west on the 270. And, I mean, yeah, we're in Dublin, and you sort of get that once you get past the sign because you see all the plantings up on the hills and left and right. And you go, hey, it's pretty neat as you're wrapping around 270. But I just wondered if we shouldn't think about maybe doing some kind of planting, at least on our half of it, coming up with a planning plan to define Dublin. So, you go, wow, you know, I'm in another community. Worthington hadn't done anything with theirs. Westerville probably looks pretty blasé too, as I recall Cleveland Avenue. But, you know, it'd be sort of neat to sort of set us apart with some kind of landscape. And it could be something as a bosque of trees or an alley of trees or a grid of trees or just something that says, hey, you know, you're in a different community. And I was just thinking about this as I was driving through it 100 trillion times, you know, a month it seems like, and how there's no real change. You sort of get it if you're looking for it, but there's no dramatic change on the actual interchange area. So, I don't know, it's just a suggestion to try to maybe, you know, let people know that they're in Dublin. I don't know how you guys feel about that, or?
First of all, well done. Comprehensive report here, good suggestions. The 270 Sawmill Interchange, would it be possible to have like Cub Scouts or volunteers pull those weeds? I know that would be a little dangerous, but it could be a volunteer project, community service project. It's just a matter. It's just a matter of walking that median and yanking those things. I want to do it myself. It's just hideous. So anyway, just an idea there. One of the things that is in your report, but you did mention it, was just general turf maintenance, I think. And this is just a matter of having the contractors that we have addressing the specific gateway areas or anywhere in the city, maybe do a little bit better job maintaining the weeds and weed whacking, edging, that kind of thing, to give it a more crisp look. Standardization of signs, I think that's a great idea. I'm not 100% sold on the monument signs. I'd like to hear everybody else's input on that. They're maybe over the top, I don't know, but the other ones are a little bit more humble, if you will, not as overstated. So I'd love to hear everybody else's input on that.
Andy, would you care if it went to Community Development to work on the entry signs? I don't know if, you know, I don't know if it's the graphics, the white and green, or there's, you know, if there's some way we can improve this to make it look more Dublin. Maybe, you know, I wouldn't want to vote on this the way it is. Okay?
I would like to see it go to committee. I think Community Development Committee would be a good one to handle this, as we do a lot of the landscape issues and entry features for homeowners associations and things like that. So we have some experience in what gateway features look like in the city. So I would like to float one idea out there. So the good news is that we have a lot of really successful youth programs in this community. The bad news is that we have a lot of, we will have a lot of signage requests for this, and then you make the determination, well, if you're the state champion, is that the Ohio High School Athletics Association state champion, or are you the, you know, this other organization's state champion and that organization? Because everyone's got a champion, right? And everyone loves to see their children celebrated. And I'm wondering if maybe we don't approach the schools in some sort of conversation to have a champions park. And it could be a space within an existing park where we, you know, we would honor all of the state champions, and we could honor them in perpetuity rather than for a short period of time. So maybe this is selfish, but my son has two high school state championships in golf. Maybe one day he would bring his kids back or his grandkids back and say, this park represents the greatness that has been achieved of this community over a long period of time. And I think maybe that would be more meaningful than having an aluminum sign up for a period of three, five, or seven years. And it might make a destination in a park, and I'm not suggesting we go buy land and make some big thing. I think maybe between us and the schools, we might have something that could be converted to a space like that, and we could honor those folks there. And the schools could do the history and make sure that we capture everything.
Could that occur at each individual high school? Because a lot of that's associated with that high school, and just curious, I mean, I...
It could, but you know, for Emerald campus, right?
Black it on the side of their building or something?
They're going to start competing in robotics sort of things, and some of those state champions are a conglomerate of multi-high schools. So I suppose that it could. I think it would be kind of neat if it was all in one place, maybe somewhere in Kaufman Park, you know, in its expanded version, maybe, you know, they're, I don't know, I just think that I don't necessarily want to put up home to the 2017, you know, Northern Ohio state champion of Battleship, whatever that is, I don't know. But I think we would need to have a little bit of criteria, and I would like it to be housed in one place because it would bring a real sense of community. Now, each high school does do a wall of fame, right, where they have all Ohio honors and things like that. So there is some space in the high schools where they honor that. I don't know that it's consistent in all the high schools. So just a thought, maybe that's something, if it was, if you all were willing, that we would take that as part of this to the Community Development Committee and maybe look for, A, is it feasible, where would we house it, and things like that.
I think you're right, Chris, and I think the other reason that it makes sense to have a place that's more of a public space is because not everybody has access to all the high schools. So, you know, if they're looking as they grow older and they want to bring their kids there and say, hey, look what I did, that's not always possible if it's in a high school. I think one of the other struggles with those particular championship signs is, and I just know this from when my daughter was in high school, she's had multiple tier championships, is it's like this weird communication thing between the schools and the city to get them up there, and there seems to be this fairly long lag time. I think if there was a central place, you could create some efficiencies around that communication and the expectation, because you just, you update it every year. So I think there's, actually, I think some really good arguments for exploring that, and I think the Community Development Committee is a great place to do that as part of the sign conversation. I'd be very supportive of sending it there.
You know, and it could be something as simple as a plaza where you've taken the names of whatever the championship was and embedded into the floor. I know, it's just down at the ROTC building where we commemorated all our guys that got killed in the war, in the past wars, and, you know, it's still a great memorial to walk through every time, you know, on the way to the OSU game. Or it could be a wall with brass plaques set in it for all these championship teams we've had, or something like that, you know. It doesn't have to be overly complicated, but I think it's a nice memorial to the achievements of our students. So it could be as simple as a floor set in, you know, Kaufman Park. It could be as simple as a wall with some brass plaques in it.
I think that's a fantastic idea, Chris, and, you know, there should just be one high school. There's only three because we keep getting bigger. And so it's, it could be a community place to represent community. So I, but I don't want to lose sight of the idea of these entry signs. But I agree with you, Andy, this is like a little bit over the top. It almost, not that this is bad, it almost looks like one of those strips in our signs where you see like six or seven things stacked on top of each other. By the time you're past it, you really have no idea what information you just looked at. However, I think we do need signs at the main entries to our community so people know they're here. And then the rest of, now you're in Dublin speaks for itself because it just feels different here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too. I think it's a proportionality waiting conversation about the design of this. So I think some more conversation about that would be, would be a useful thing. So how did you decide where the main entryway signs would be?
Yeah, we worked with Transportation and Mobility, and we looked at areas that we felt were kind of those key areas with significant entryways where there's lots of traffic into the city. This, for instance, was the idea to put it at Emerald Parkway. This landscaping around it, in fact, already exists. And so Emerald Parkway being a main thoroughfare into the city, we felt was appropriate with several people entering the city, several cars entering the city. And that was the thought with each and every one of the monument sign locations, was these are areas where we're getting significant traffic entering the city that we would want to call out, that you're entering Dublin in a way that doesn't exist currently.
So by traffic counts, basically?
Yes, exactly. Right.
Yeah, that makes sense. So I think either the decision is they're all the same, or there's something unique about each one of them relative to where they are, which could also be interesting too about their location in the city. So I think it's a, I think it's a bigger conversation, so I think it would make sense to go to the Community Development.
And that's appreciated feedback in terms of, this was a concept in which we would allow an entry, a monument sign, to also call out the various designations, whether it's Purple Heart City or the high school state championships. But this sign, we liked because, you know, it's just really just a welcome to Dublin sign. And so Councilmember Peterson, to your point of a shopping center, I can see where you're coming from, whereas this is just kind of more, you see it, you know you're entering. There's three on Sawmill. We feel that there's a pretty significant change when you enter the city from Sawmill, that you're entering Dublin. I think you feel it when you just look at the landscaping and you look at the quality of the maintenance, but we want to make sure that we're calling it out so people know this is no longer Columbus or neighboring city, but this is Dublin that you're entering. And we certainly, this was our, we wanted to put something out there, we wanted to start the conversation. Fully expect, again, this is so subjective, fully expecting that we could have a much further conversation with the, with the committee. Councilmember Keeler, going back to your point on just turf management, contract management is something that we are actively working on, particularly with the number of contractors we have. We've seen frankly, a bit of a fall off this year, and we think it's directly indicative of the trouble that some of our contractors are having getting staffing. And so that's something, we have a position that we're having, we're changing the title of positions, it's the same position, same pay, but it's going to be fully solely focused on quality management and in terms of maintaining our right-of-way contracts. And so that's something that really is a full-time job, keeping an eye on all of our various contracts and making sure that they're meeting our specs and they're meeting our standards. So that's something that staff is well aware of and that we're actively working on to make sure we're staying on top of our contractors, they're meeting our spec and our standard, and they're not just leaving a job poorly done.
And that position is vacant at this time, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So I think really the job description is going to be important for that.
Absolutely.
You know, more of a project manager kind of position than, than maybe what it has been previously.
And that's, that's a great point, Mayor, and that's why we wanted to change the title to make sure that we're attracting the type of talent that we need to do that, because that's a different skill set than, than we think that the job description prior was calling for. So that's exactly why we're making that change.
Yeah, you know, I think it should go before a Community Development too, because there's a lot of, you know, questions here. But, but one of the ones I would ask, and I understand, I'm looking at the old sign, the old Dublin sign and the new one, and the new font, I know we use on our website, and I know we're using it sort of with our media, but is it necessary that that font is what we use to replace the old Dublin font? Because I think that's a recognizable, there's something about the old font that speaks to the city that I think people relate to, and I'm just wondering if this just won't seem trendy where that seems to have a timelessness. We've used that font for a long time. I just want that to be a subject to be brought up at Community Development. I don't have the answer for it, but this strikes me as something that I would get tired of. But it's fine with, you know, what we're using in media and that sort of thing, but when you put it on...
I don't know that it has to be our branding font. It could be the Visit Dublin branding font, which is more, a little bit more welcoming. There might be other branding opportunities we don't necessarily have to align with.
Yeah, that's how I feel. When I look at that, I don't feel like I'm coming home. I feel like I'm looking at an advertisement or a social media font, and that, and it just, I just want you to bring it up.
Did you have something else, Andy?
I was just going to say, I know the timing doesn't really work because we're trying to move the ball on this, but this branding consultant that you're wanting to hire, I know it's only, it's only a sign, but it's an image in our gateway, and we want to be consistent across all channels in the messaging that we're giving. So I don't know, it's kind of a conundrum, because I would be asking that person their opinion.
Yeah, we're not looking to reinvent the brand, but just outside perspective, so. But I, I think this is a very reason you have committees, and would recommend you move and vote to send this to the Community Development Committee. We were actually thinking about trying to move out on these, these other signs quicker, but since this conversation has gone where it's gone, I think we're going to, you know, obviously wait till you go through that process, both, just to be clear, both for the monument signs and that discussion as to whether to do that or not, or how, and then also these other signs as well. So it's the entire sign package then.
And we do have a Community Development Committee meeting on November the 30th, and we could get this on that agenda so that we don't drag it out too long. I realize that might not be as quick as perhaps some folks had hoped, but I think it will be, will be in a timely fashion, so. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to recommend this topic to the Community Development Committee to be heard on their November 30th agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, John. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to staff comments. General?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you. Council reports, committee reports, admin. Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes, thank you. I have just, I have a little bit to report. We met last Tuesday, the 5th of October, and we discussed several of the larger, what I would call, follow-up items from our retreat. Let me just share a little bit about what we discussed and where they're going. So we discussed the virtual hybrid meeting draft ordinance. We made some suggested changes and a couple additions, and that will come before this body for full discussion at our first reading on October the 25th, so look for that. Second, we did an additional update to the council rules of order. Also discussed as follow-up what we discussed at the retreat and made those additions. That will likely come because if it's in a relationship with the virtual meeting draft ordinance, come before for a potential resolution on the 8th of November to this group. Then we continued the discussion of proclamations and that particular policy. We made a few edits to that and additions that came up from the retreat, and that will come to us as a update from a staff memo at our October 25th council meeting. And then we saw a first draft of the council chamber building use policy that came to the committee as requested again at the last council meeting. We had a pretty detailed discussion about that and some potential additions and/or changes. So a draft of that, because of the nature of it's more of a work topic, will come before council at our October 18th work session. So look for the draft of that because that'll come back before us pretty soon. And then finally, the committee spent some time with preliminary work on items related to processes for the succession management plans for the city managers. So we had a very full agenda, and many of those items, so watch for it, will come before us here as follow-ups from our retreat over the next week or so, so next month or so, rather. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Community Development Committee meeting, Mr. Reiner?
We have a number of different items for discussion on November 30th at 5:00 p.m. And I'd like to ask the staff, if they could contact ODOT just to see what the opportunities are for landscaping or just putting some kind of planting trees or bosque or grid out there of plants on 270. If we're actually looking at maintaining that, you know, maybe we could look at getting their permission to maybe upgrade that entry into Dublin. So if you could report back to the meeting if that's in agreement with my fellow council folks, see what ODOT has to say about that. Thank you.
I think, I think there might be one change to that. I believe that there was a proposal for the Community Development Committee to meet on the 25th prior to another meeting that we had. So those emails circulated, and I think that that meeting may have been moved to the 25th, but I'm sure Megan will send out a verification email tomorrow and let us all know. But I believe it's going to be the 25th at 4:45.
So it's been moved from the 30th?
We were trying to piggyback it onto another meeting that we had later that evening.
That's fine.
So.
See you on the 25th.
Okay. Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Aludo?
Nothing this time.
Okay, and Public Services, Ms. Fox?
We have our meeting this Wednesday at, I think it's 5:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Council Roundtable, our start down at the end with Mr. Peterson. Ms. Aludo? Mr. Reiner?
Jane, it's all about the graphics and the fonts, so I agree with you.
Mr. Keeler?
So the latest issue of Dublin life was packed with all kinds of really good jewels. The feature story was about a female veteran, and what struck me was the last sentence she said was, Dublin is like a movie set, it's perfect.
Oh, good.
It's, it's not perfect, nothing's perfect, but it's the work of this team and being recognized nationally for economic development in their parks, just working so hard for the residents of the city. And I know this sounds cheesy, but I'm beaming with pride, I really am. First-rate group, the signage and entryway gateway conversation occurred four months ago. We already have a report here, we're already acting on it. It's just impressive. And I don't usually thank people just for doing their jobs, but I do believe in recognizing people for going above and beyond. So thank you for that.
Great, thanks, Andy. Jane?
No, you know, I echo what Andy says. At planning and zoning, I know we're not reporting on planning and zoning tonight, I would ask council to take a look at the minutes for planning. I would ask council to take a look at the minutes for planning and zoning. But one of the things I want to point out is that we have a new restaurant coming at the corner of Riverside and Bridge Park. It's a Cameron Mitchell restaurant called The Baltimore. And it went through quite a bit of, it was a minor project review that took three meetings to get through it. One of the things that I would say, and it speaks to this, staff recognized an issue there that was problematic with the public plaza and the restaurant and brought together the Dublin Arts Council and Crawford Hoynes to address that and allow the Baltimore restaurant to go forward. One of the things that I think that you're mentioning is that there's a sense of community here among staff and organizations and the commission who are citizens that really try to find solutions to problems that are a little bit more unique than maybe what happened in other communities. I'm not sure, but, but I think it's really, it's really complimentary to say that we have the well-being of the, of the city at heart. The lady that happened to be at the planning and zoning meeting, and she was the only one and she stayed till 10:30. We didn't even get our last agenda item on there because it went so late, stood up and said, the one thing that I would say about all of you is that you're thorough and that you're careful and that you care about how it all is going to turn out. And I think that speaks to what you said. So thank you, staff, and thank everybody for the cooperation they do to make that happen.
I just wanted to run through a couple of things. Wanted to thank the board and commission members. Kathy and I had the opportunity to sit down and touch base with them on the 28th. So thank all of them for their time and thank you all for the opportunity to engage with them. And I know those conversations will be forthcoming when we start talking about our policy relative to how the meetings are managed in a, in a digital world. The school board meeting was held here that evening on the 28th and I was fortunate to do the welcome there and we honored, I believe it was 38 national merit finalists and their families. And it was good to have them here, good use of space. Want to congratulate on the 29th, Jane and I were both at the Chase Bank ribbon cutting on Sawmill Road and certainly want to welcome them to the community. The digital or Virtual Legends Luncheon was that day as well, so that was a great highlight for our city. And that evening, we sworn a new ARB member. So I'm glad to have that commission fully staffed. Wanted to share with all of you, on the, October the 1st, we had a comma meeting. Dana and I both participated in that. He led some discussion relative to the broadband work that's happening and I led a discussion about municipal income tax and the ability of comma to speak with one voice to our legislature. And Dana did a great job with that. And I think we had significant support from all the members on comma on both of those issues of how we will handle broadband at the State House and how we will also handle the municipal income tax issue. Want to congratulate the Arts Council for their final Sunday at Souda concert, Sunday evening. On October the 5th, we had a new business open up in our historic district. I had the opportunity to do a ribbon cutting for the ACS title company in Berkshire Hathaway that is occupying the facility immediately to the north of the Chamber of Commerce building. So if you have a moment to stop in there and welcome them, please do so. On the 6th, Leadership Dublin started their, had their inaugural meeting for the Leadership Dublin class and I had the opportunity to welcome them. And they have a great group this session and it will be, look forward to the work that comes out of there. Did have a Morpsy Executive Committee on, meeting on the 7th and this will be my year to undertake Williams' review, so appreciate your thoughts on that. It'll be a challenge for me, for sure. Want to highlight Joe Bechard. Friday evening, I had the opportunity to go to the Evolution Theater and watch our own Joe Bechard star as one of the two men in a two-man show and in the Abbey Theater and it was called The Story of My Life. And it was really touching and it was extremely well-done. And so I would like to thank Joe and his team for representing our community with excellence and doing a great job at bringing theater and the arts to, to our community. Finally, today I had the opportunity to have lunch with the mayor of Shawnee Hills, Dan Matthews, and really engage in more rigorous conversation than what we've had is, you know, they, they lost their previous mayor and he certainly is sorely missed, but it is time for us to build relationships with the new leadership there. And so we, we are continuing that journey today. So Dana and I had the opportunity to have lunch with him and their police chief, who is also their economic development director, or development director?
Administrator.
Administrator. So just wanted to make you all aware of that. And with that, I have nothing further. Have a wonderful evening. We will stand adjourned.